Support meeting. Support meeting is the board. And we will begin with role hall and for those that are in the audience, we have one of our trustees. Who is online tonight due to personal. So if you see me wait to give his vote on things. That one. Um, roll hall, um, trustee Grease.
Resume.
Trustee Booker here, trustee Woods here. Trustee Owens here. Trustee Jonathan present, trustee Thompson here, president Montgomery here. We would invite the audience to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And we should be proud of the Lord which stands. One nation under God. In this small, but with a sincere love for all. So the next item on our agenda is person to examine and be heard. Bring one on our. Tyler, my first name. Okay, thank you. Before we go into the next segment, I'm designing to acknowledge all of them. Um, I didn't reach out to you to say happy belated mother's day. Next item on our agenda is, um, elected official and staff report. Um, there are two propositions lifted here that, um, I will be signing. Um, later on, just making sure the trustees are aware of it. And then Tyler, you had something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I just, every quarter we'll be putting in the, um, the year-to-date financial summaries for the village. So, uh, thank you for Derek for working on that. I just want to let the public and the board know that that is included in the staff reports.
Okay, were there any questions or comments about? Any of the other staff reports? If not, we will move on to either number B. Or five. Um, there is a special presentation, um, annual contribution for the Brown Deer Junior Women's Club.
Thank you. I don't know if I need to mic up because my voice tends to carry. But for those of you who don't know who we are, my name is Carolyn Mitchell. I'm the current treasurer for the Brown Deer Junior Women's Club. The Brown Deer Junior Women's Club is a group of women that gather together and, um, try to promote civic improvement and such. Um, one of the things that we do is we have fundraisers. By the way, I'm also joined by our current president, Dorothy Pross. Sorry. Um, we have fundraisers throughout the year and all of, uh, the majority of the money raised at fundraisers goes back to the community. This year, we have some contributions to make. One of them is going to be mailed and that is going to the Brown Deer Library. We are sending them one thousand five hundred dollars. The Brown Deer Library, for those of you who don't know, um, the Brown Deer Junior is actually where instrumental in beginning that library way back in the days. Um, they were with us in the basement of the village hall and they supported every year with annual contributions whenever we can. To help further their causes. Um, and if I could have the gentleman from the police department, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Could you join us up here, please? Chief Winter. Okay, my name. I wouldn't say that. I have a check for one thousand dollars. Your department can ask for. Eight to twelve kids, trauma kits for your officers, and that would be nine hundred dollars. We've all ended up to a thousand. So now you can equip thirteen, but that's kind of an odd number. So you may want to just use them for replacements. You're very welcome. Thank you for everything you do for our community. You're kind of deep, thanks for having me too. I'm terrible with these. Okay, so we also have a check for the North Shore Fire Department. They asked for funding because they want to get back into community outreach. And they needed money to buy helmets and stickers for the children of the community. And since our one of our state officers, um, has empowered youth as one of her focus items, we felt this was a very great thing for us to do. So he's also getting a thousand dollars to buy some helmets and stairs. And thank you. We couldn't live around here without the fire police department. They just are everything, especially to me. And then Danielle from the park address, are you here? There you are. You were behind me. Okay, so Danielle had sent up the, um, sponsorship application and, and list. So the Brown Deer Juniors decided that they wanted to do a sponsorship of five hundred dollars for the red, white, and blue, and five hundred dollars for the contest. So the thousand dollar check in here for you to get those sponsorships for us. And thank you. Because you're the partner of the community. Yeah. So that's a four thousand five hundred dollar contribution that we made to the Village of Brown Deer. Um, we also have three thousand seventy-one dollars that are going to the school district. We'll be at that beginning next week. And then we have some other ones for, um, different organizations that are not in the village, but, um, we felt that they needed money. So our total money that we're giving back to the community and, um, people in needs is eight thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars. Twenty-five women. So we can't do it without the community behind us and, and, you know, supporting us. So if you see fundraisers for Brown Deer Junior Women's Club, we have run sales twice a year, April and September. If you ever see those run sale signs go up, if you got stuff to donate, great. If you want to stop in and buy something, that's even better. And Dorothy, you have something to say?
Um, I just want to take this opportunity. This year marks that Brown Deer Junior Women's Club has been in existence for fifty-five years. So, um, that's our fifty-five year anniversary. And also, we cannot do fundraisers. They will raise this money if we did not have the help of the village and the schools allowing us to use the facilities. At no charge and people to help. So, um, as Carolyn said, visit our fundraisers. We also have a bump hole. We have a final raffle. And you already can see, we are very successful that we were able to give this money away. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you both. And hopefully that gives you way even more money.
The more we raise, the more we can give back.
Um, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Um, which we have consideration of our minutes from our May first meeting. And acceptance of our April voucher statement. Is there a motion?
I believe we approved the consent.
Is there a factor? It's been moved by trustee Tomlin and second by trustee Owens to approve the consent agenda. All of the favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Under new business, um, consider approval of the Brown Deer County hit the plan update. Tyler or Nate?
I'll pass it to Nate. Sure. I, uh, will take a moment for a brief introduction and kind of highlights of the discussion that happened at the planning mission. And we also have Nathan Giger. Our consultant committee, um, who's here, who will walk us through a brief presentation on the findings of the report and some of the, the changes that the planning mission requested. And, uh, I want to start off by letting the board know that at this meeting, it will be for informational purposes only, really. Uh, because of statutory requirements, we do have to post notice for thirty days. That we are amending or updating our comprehensive plan. This has been done. And so we are scheduling final action. For adopting the comprehensive plan at our twenty-sixth meeting. Effectively, what we would be doing is adopting ordinance that would say that the comprehensive plan, as it is updated in twenty twenty-three, is now. Uh, a guiding land use document that we are going to be making our decisions on planning and zoning and development. Based on the foundations and recommendations established in that comprehensive plan. And so we've are building off of that two thousand nine comprehensive plan. Uh, every community in the state is required to have a comprehensive plan. As the foundation of your land use. So we, uh, started off with the plan in two thousand nine. I, I'm proud to say that the village out of the seventy-plus recommendations in the plan, we've achieved a great majority of them. Over seventy percent of them have been achieved. Others are still ongoing. Uh, some are not really attainable and were aspirational at the time. Uh, but I think we've done very well. And so the new plan captures that. It highlights. Uh, the changes that have happened in Brown Deer, both economically, demographically, and so on. And, uh, it's a, I think, a good reflection of where we were and where we're headed. So this plan summarizes really the last eight months or so, nine months. We started at the end of last, uh, summer with the planning commission. And had surveys, uh, community drop-in workdays, interviews with all of you, uh, interviews with selected stakeholders in the community. And putting that all together, uh, went back to the planning commission this past, uh, week. And at the planning commission, there was robust discussion. I think the general consensus was that it's a solid basis for a plan. There were a few, uh, changes that were requested, some of the, the graphics, uh, putting the date into twenty twenty-three instead of twenty twenty-two. Uh, as simple as that may sound. And, uh, overall, the plant commission did unanimously recommend, and they adopted a resolution on their own to recommend this to the village board. So with that. I'll pass over to Nathan. He has a few brief slides to go through, and then we can open it up just to Q and A, uh, afterwards. All right. Thanks, Nathan. Of course, I think, oh, yeah, later, I'll get you the microphone here. Oh, do you need it? Okay. Yeah, I can talk about other ones. Um, hi, everybody, and thank you. I'm Nathan here. I'm ready with comments. It's been my pleasure to work on this project since last summer. Um, I'll be back in Brown Deer. So a brief presentation, those of you who want the conditions, you'll look pretty familiar. It's pretty much the same ones from last week with a few additions on the end base that I was studying. Like Monday. Um, so, next slide, please. So the, the comprehensive plan update has these, is these four, four elements to actually four main tasks. One was, uh, stakeholder involvement in the states. Uh, we interviewed all, maybe talked to the plan commission. We did a public survey that had more than two hundred responses. We had drop-in workdays, focused groups with, um, people of special interest in Brown Deer, some, some people as economic development folks. And, um, and public workdays. Uh, we did a, a update of all the data. I don't know if you've looked at the old two thousand nine plan, but there's a lot of data in there about the villages required in statute. We looked at the, the makeup of the villages. Um, population, jobs, businesses that are here, housing stock, um, education, all the way across the world, transportation statistics. How do we get to that? Um, we updated, updated all of those. What we really did was based on that stakeholder involvement. Focused in on a couple of, a couple of items that people telling us over and over again, we're very important in the village. One was economic developments, you know, largely what's going to go on in some of these, in some of these. Or receiving maybe underutilized commercial spaces in the village, how we go to the village's tax codes. Second item really was, um, housing. You know, Brown Deer has developed a lot of housing since that two thousand nine plan was adopted, as Nate said. Among those seven stomach recommendations, a number of had to be for supplying the village's housing products available to housing village. To meet the needs of a variety of, of your residents. Um, and those are really the two that we really, really focused on. We had also, um, talked about parks and recreational facilities and cultural facilities, community facilities, transportation. Um, all of that kind of thing, all of the, all of the elements of the plan. Um, from the data analysis and stakeholder involvement, we went in and my team researched how other communities, similar peer communities. Are addressing the kinds of issues that we found in Brown Deer. You know, many, many communities across the country are looking at the same kind of issues you are. Um, and developed a handful of a set of recommendations, policy recommendations for the village to influence. To meet the, uh, the challenges that we identified, uh, by your stakeholders. And then finally, the last, the last element is the documentation. So there's, there's four, four pieces to that. A summary of the plan, um, a summary of the stakeholder involvement, data analysis summary, and a table of all of the recommendations. And next slide, please. And I want to just point out here that that recommendation table is really what I think of as the plan. I mean, there, there are recommendations across the nine required plans once, um, the ones I just touched on. And they really look at things you've accomplished in the past. What should keep going on from the original two thousand nine plan and then a, a number of new ideas to meet some emerging, emerging issues in the village. Good.
This side of them?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, one thing we didn't want to really do in this plan was look at how much the village has accomplished since the two thousand nine plan was adopted. I, it's really remarkable the things that have changed here. Uh, all of these things we used to highlight are things that were first recommended in that plan. A lot of that came from, from, frankly, Nate's guidance, because he was here way back then. Um, but really, a, a number of major, major accomplishments, the creation of housing development, the, the original village. Um, the changes in transportation infrastructure on Bradley Road, on your road, you want to go up there, came to that construction. On the way out here, and that's a happy intersection, I have to say, a lot better than what was there, right? And that was envisioned in the last plan. Um, all of these things of the community center, the, the, um, JFS, senior housing, moving the library. All of those things were, were projects and policies that were recommended in the last plan we accomplished. So we really wanted to make sure that we highlighted what the village has done in that time. Next slide, please. So the thing, the thing I want to sort of have and start to think about here is. I pulled out a couple of, of highlights from the plan and I looked at, I went back and to look at the, um, the minutes, the notes I took when we met the planning commission and when we did our trustee interviews. And what were the items? That you told us were the most important things the village should address over the next eight or ten years. And, um, in each case, I'm going to show you how some recommendations played out based on those concerns. So this first one was economic development in the land use. Um, you know, there was a lot of concern about the underutilized. Commercial and in some cases, office areas in the village. Um, and, and not that they're necessarily a tremendous drag economically on you at the moment, but they are very visible, sort of very visible, um, in high-profile areas. I think, of course, the marketplace in particular. Um, so we wanted to take these things into, into consideration. How do we think about increasing the amount of mixed use? Land uses in the village? How do we add some housing? And one of the things that I thought was really important that came strongly from, from the board of trust thesis, how do we clarify to? To residents of the village, what are the limitations that the village board can actually do, right? I know that people come to you all the time and say, why, why can't you fix the, why can't you fix the marketplace? And because you're alone. That's right. The village is, any of you tell it has limited input tools that they can use to promote, uh, orderly desirable development. And so hopefully, with some of the changes to, to the plan and some of the innovations we made, we'll give you a few, a few new tools to do that. Um, so a couple of the key recommendations that came out of this, you see here are to start planning now for. A new tax and environmental district sometime in the future that's going to encompass this whole, what we're thinking of as a sort of village center area. So that will be from, from the original village up here around village hall and over across, particularly to the marketplace. So start thinking about what that's going to look like when the time comes where you'll be able to, be able to act on, on some redevelopment opportunities. Um, at the same time, continue to plan for that, that desirable mixed-use development at the marketplace. A, 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 the development that when the times, Ryan, when those owners are ready to sell, someone's ready to step in. You have already thought through what would you like to see there, right? What we heard from you is, is a variety of housing. So some commercial, not housing, but a density of some support, increased mental development, a lot of the kinds of commercial development. Would like in Brown Deer. Um, a lot of that takes, uh, a little more intensity to bring the development, or is it a new kind of neighborhood services, restaurants, coffee shops, that kind of thing? Although I think it's already started, we're seeing it already happening here. Um, and finally, to really acknowledge the presence of the river. The river is this huge underutilized asset in Brown Deer. You know, we knew this back in two thousand nine and it's still, still true today. We do have the, the, um, the new park on the river, if you move on, so. But, um, but there's more to be done. The river is people's home, who's reached everyone's deep ground here, let's acknowledge its presence. Um, and also acknowledge that location in the marketplace, so the stats and gateway, entrance under the village. How do we know we're in Brown Deer now? You know, in the future, whatever you design there, it's going to stay there, I believe. Um, and then finally, we do some sort of wonky recommendations about selling code changes and overlays that might help, help, um, help developers understand what's happening, some of that might be transitioned. So if you've got, um, some of that underutilized, we tell them, we walk around your road, we walk Bradley Road, we go over here on, on, on Green Day Road. There are some tools that you'll see if you look at the, the plan itself, some overlaying types of zoning, because being used successfully in some other cities and villages. To, um, enable a change in the usage path a little faster than an outright. Next slide, please. And if I'm talking to you, my, let me know. If there are any questions, please let me know. Um, second item, the area that was really of great interest, uh, to people everywhere was housing. So what do we do to continue the diversification of, of the housing products available in Brown Deer? Um, you know, in two thousand nine, we did the first, we didn't necessarily, we found that almost all the housing was pretty veteran range, but almost all of it. Now you can versatile that a lot. You've had an apartment, some really nice, private park, senior housing. Um, but we're still looking for opportunities maybe to create some, some larger homes, some families who, oh, they want to leave Brown Deer. Um, people do love it. They're, they're, they're fine. Really look at people's values and people strongly value a brown hair office in terms of. Safety, uh, you know, a beautiful place to do tree cover, everything's close by. People really like it here and diversity. Diversity of the communities is really, really valued by your residents. Um, we're looking for opportunities to accommodate some differences. We're going to have to, that's just, okay, what they answered about, certain opportunities to conduct, maybe. Uh, so. What we, um, came up with a couple of the recommendations that are kind of interesting. One is to allow exceptionally dwelling units. So that is essentially a mother-in-law apartment, build a detached or attached, um, analog parcel by right. Some communities are going to do this, Door County is done, this Crestville County. They just allow them by right. Want to build a little, a little house under parcel? Go ahead. You know, you can special provisions, other than normal ability to house in permits.
Nate, would that be seven or two, a tiny house?
Could be a tiny house. It could be attached, right? As long as it's a separate entrance, it could be attached to the house. Um, so this provides potential for some opportunities to just diversify and increase the number of. Variety of, of housing. A lot of people, there's what, I would love a place where their parents could be able to live, right? And it could be attached, it could be their own house. Um, so it's a change to the zoning code, obviously, to do that. And this other one, uh, this next one, we don't live in the name for, we're calling these edge, edge developments. This came out of a focus group to deal with. Developers who are, and real estate professionals who are working in Brown Deer. Um, and they were suggesting that the village consider looking at. Areas along the edges of established single-family residential neighborhood. So those houses, those parcels that are along the archery old roads. Big busy roads before you're, 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 you're regular single-family neighborhoods here. And to allow development, uh, slightly denser. Um, housing along, along those edges. So let's say you want to order a G plus, right? Or you want to combine two parcels and put it in four units, you know, well designed, you obviously have, you know, design guidelines and things, but something to add a little bit of density. Buffer that single-family neighborhood from the, um, from the busy traffic and, and allow for a slow increase, slightly in density and the variety of housing products. That was interesting, I was, I had, was I met. Remember, last week when the city in Milwaukee, I was just, I was in the zoning code revision or something. And I was telling you about this idea. That's like the four families that belong in spring, but yeah, that's really what it is. It's really, you know, the corners of four family residence on a lot of these, you know, a lot of these streets, they are triple rooms in Milwaukee. There could be something blood fast.
I think that question, yeah, Nate, do we know? Currently, how many staff has gone? I mean, I know the categories. But, um, time moments and or for units. Do we have?
The, there is a, a breakdown, uh, by the census, uh, but it, it isn't. As accurate as I would like. I think you, you have some further refinement, uh, because it doesn't. Completely distinguish some of our larger condos compared to the smaller ones that Nathan's talking about. Uh, so, you know, it does say, you know, when you get into the, the housing of the census, it does say. Unit types, you know, list out single-family and then two-family, four-family. Yeah, a number of, a number of units, but it's not, it's not written here anywhere. So you're saying, yeah, you, you got one, one unit in your building. Two, and then, you know, four or more or something. So you don't know if that's thirty or four, right? Yeah, so I think that's probably the individual again.
Oh, trustee. Well, I was just curious, like from the last census. Um, does it say? Uh, what the size of the families are? Because I was under the impression that families were getting smaller.
It does say the average household size. And it does say family size, although we didn't look at that. As I'm recalling, top of my head. Uh, household size is getting slightly larger and very, very small, but it is, it is growing, which reflects. The sort of, um, the fact that the village is becoming younger, right? Um, some people who lived here for a long time have, have moved on to other, other types of housing, the faces of their life. And they're being replaced in a normal neighborhood churned by younger families who needed to be back in the house now, right? Yeah, so you're actually getting a slightly bigger. All right, next slide, please. Um, and the last one that really came up strongly was, I guess, this came up strongly in two thousand nine plan, identity of the village. What is, what is Brown Deer? What does it mean? Um, how do we tell the story about, about how, frankly, how wonderful Brown Deer is? Um, and some of the ideas that you had were activated public spaces, creating some public art in the village. And really to recognize those gateways into and out of the village. And a couple of the ideas we had was, well, of course, focusing your reprogramming. Maybe sort of public programs, so as you know what you're doing, director's gone, but, um, you know, focus those on these new places in your building. Where you're building, you're building a town square of the original village, right? And it's really incredible space. So let's start, you know, having some official program, having there, to be there, in this space here. All about that idea created in this sort of village center at some time in the future. Um, and then, uh, another idea that we came up with, or that you came up with, was, uh, to establish a public art community or to be a sub-community of duplication. Uh, to really start to develop a program for selecting citing and funding of public artwork. Um, public artwork, no matter what you do, it's always high profile. People have an opinion about her. So I would suggest that you do it transparent fashion. And if you're going to think about some public artwork, um, I do think in ten hour policy of. Golden, beautiful opportunity for something that is really unique to Brown Deer. But it takes money, it takes time, and it takes, it takes public gaze, right? So I would suggest that you then, so recommending the establishment of a community to sort of guide that process. So you've got, you've got a process that you can rely on in the future with public art. And then this, this is the slide that the, the plan commission passed. We had a pretty robust discussion on Monday. And one of the things we talked about was, was the invitation and these plan recommendations, but I think the, the, the plan recommendation, but there's a big table, there's a lot. Um, some of them you're already doing, some of them you can see. Um, but some aren't. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what that might look like from the village's, village board's perspective. Um, you could, we haven't, but you could characterize these recommendations as, you know, long, medium, or short-term. Um, some of them, things that you can do with relatively low cost, relatively easy, will have relatively small impact on the village. Some of them aren't. Much longer term, much, much bigger, and will be more expensive in future to go forward. We have the potential to have a much greater impact on the environment of the village. Um, so I would suggest that at some point. With the, um, Nate's help that you think about, you know, which of these things are really your priorities? What can you be, what can be done to ease the worst timing for people grab immediately? Um, I would suggest that prioritization is done, is best done transparently. Uh, you know, let people know. People can contribute to this plan. A lot of people, there will be several hundred people contribute to this plan. Um, so if you are going to prioritize, maybe it's something you have a community discussion about somewhere. Um, you're blessed with having an excellent staff here. There are a number of these type of, of these recommendations quite technical in nature. They have to do with. Zoning changes and, you know, that kind of stuff. Outside of Jeff, you can rely on, on Nate and Tyler to guide you to do that, um, you know, keep an eye on him, of course, but. But, uh, they know what they're doing and you're, you're lucky that way. Um, and then, and then. And then, and then really to, to rely on your resident expertise for some of these more complex, more complex things. And if you're really going to do any visioning around the future of marketplace, you've got some incredible people that are not a lot of, who really understand. You know, development, they understand architecture, they understand transportation, you know, infrastructure, all this stuff, you're going to need to know, you've got here in the village. You know, finals folks. And then finally, look out for those sort of opportunistic initiatives, right? I mean, when. Bipartisan infrastructure bill comes along, it can offer opportunities, right? And these things will change. When grant up to this along through D N R or through M M S D, you know, be willing, be ready to go back. Oh my gosh, here's this opportunity, happy to use it, what's in here that we possibly use. And I guess. That's what I have to say. If you want to talk about any, and I haven't talked too much, if you want to talk about any of those recommendations in detail, I'm happy to. Otherwise, it's rude and my pleasure to come back to my mind here to run another round.
Well, thank you again, Nate, I don't know if Nate or Tyler have anything you want to add?
If I have anything, you know, don't mind. So. The, the, the nice thing about doing the presentation tonight, and Nate alluded to June twenty sixth is when we'll have that official public hearing. We wanted to do the recording now and share that in our communication that, you know, in case members of the public don't want to go through the entire document. They can get a summary, like the presentation you received tonight, so we'll be promoting that through all of our communication channels. Would be great to have both the board as well as the public support as far as sharing. On this recording, just the key of that conversation with the public. But this is just a great opportunity for us to get that summary out in advance for the public to know. So that was kind of a, a, a nice thing about doing the presentation tonight, while, while the public hearing.
And that might be an opportunity, many other members of the planning commission to have any comments about, that's people, that's people or.
I guess for myself, after reviewing, one of the things that I noticed, we all talked about our diversity, our strength in diversity. But one thing I noticed that it doesn't, it's all in businesses being diverse within our area. And I think if we talk about really trying to address diversity, I think we also need to address business diversity. Because I like to give a shot in my community and support my businesses here.
Yeah, everything about this, one thing that I'd like to see is more of a market approach to. Talk about what's going on around here, you know, I see. Tell us, we show a great scene, we, we, we have a lot to talk about here, it'd be a nice marketing approach. And we have some sort of video convergible. Presentation that next talks about what's going on.
So then to both of those points. We're starting to go through the community survey data that we have, there will be a presentation for you July seventeenth that will summarize that. But part of that night, we definitely trying to work out a. A, a marketing plan that will, I mean, we've been waiting for the community survey to be done, so we can start using the survey to formulate that plan. Now that we have those results, we're going to start putting together some initiatives that we can do internally. To help with that, so at that point, both points will be hit in that plan. Where we'll try to identify some initiatives and then get some feedback from both the board as well as. Community members. The last point I want to let people know is, so if you look at my. Village manager reports, a lot of times you're, you've been seeing this here, I've been meeting with business owners. And I'm in the forties right now, as far as how many business owners I've been meeting with, and the reason why I've been meeting with them. Be proactive and start to have a relationship with them. So when we put together this business marketing plan. I can reach out to them to get input. If I didn't have that relationship established earlier. That would be a simple delete email, but hopefully with that established relationship, we can get their feedback as well. So that's, that's all forthcoming, you know, I think that would complement a lot of the things that are included in the comprehensive plan. But stay tuned for a more detailed update in July on that.
And just thinking about the marketing unit and what I look at is, you can have a plan. But the best marketing tool we have is ourselves. The people that live in the village of Brown Deer are speaking positively about what's going on. And when you hear people tell you, I mean, I spent one night last week, which I typically don't. A whole night just going clarifying things about why I shot in Brown Deer. Because we don't support. What we do here, we don't, we can't, but I think we really, we do our best for this purpose. When we tell the community on public, uh, social media, I don't shop where I think I go anywhere else. So, and it's not everyone, and I know a lot of people are not, but as trustees and those of us that live here. I invite people to come here. So we need to do more of that, and once the plan is in place. Give us some talking points that we can share with those. And not only those that live here, but those that are considering moving.
And so one, one point to this, when you look through the, the data analysis, you can find striking. The demographic changes in Brown Deer in the last fifteen years. Those to become A, A group, but it was predicted that it was going to go to language. B is become much more rich and diverse, it's become better educated. So more people with college degrees, something that's becoming younger, has become wealthier. I would suggest that, that business diversity follows the money, and that is. Right? I think, I think you've got to tell the story, but the market is here, and especially if you can increase some, some of the density. I think that those businesses will see, but is that here, and I think it is, I think it is, I think you've seen, right, right? Those desirable types of businesses and restaurants, shops, right, Starbucks, that's, that's here now. But we can look at the, the Brown Deer, it's a, it's a long, long story, so now maybe we can.
And one of the things that we talked about at the plan commission is we come up with a document that's more succinct. You know, not the forty, fifty, A, one to one page, right? So that people can see right off the bat, this is, this is who Brown Deer is. And we did do, talked about the video, we did a video, I was in it.
For ten years, I ran this improvement district in Milwaukee. One of the things I found that would be a difference when you got into our particular districts, we had flags. We have very deep flags, so when you came along our corner, you knew where. And when we came to Christmas, we would change, put up these holiday flags or the lights, they'll tell you. I have people from the city calling me on, on that issue, because it really. It differentiated us from, you know, this, those are the kind of things, but if people. Talk about Brown Deer up on seventy six street and ninety, which is not Brown Deer. But we need to, when you get in Brown Deer, and he speaks up, and he says, this is the real village of Brown Deer, you know.
We, I, I perhaps will allocate a good thirty, forty five minutes, because I don't think, this is a discussion that. You go in the community and people want to spend time talking about, it's a passion area. It was very clear in the survey, so we're going to allocate, allocate quite a bit of time to talk about this. And that's even before in advance, the board will send out an email to you as trustees. Getting some feedback of things you want to see in that plan, and while the plan may not have adopted. Right then and there on that July seventeenth, it's, it's going to start the conversation so we can get something going.
I do want to give opportunities for other trustees, trustees, we, do you have any comments related to the plan?
No, not, not right now, thank you.
All right, trustee Woods? Trustee Owens?
Well, you know, I was coming on therapy and. How things fit together, before we put out the final print, we gotta reread this thing. Because there's some duplication in some areas that I talked about there.
Okay. Are you offering to, uh, volunteer? So you, you. Thank you so much.
I did have a question, it's a random question. But on a natural and cultural resources, one of the bullets, the last bullet, it talks about the development of the dog park. And the subject has come up multiple times during the course of meetings. And it talks about the dog park being, you know, on Green Bay Road, South of Coles. But it also talks about this could potentially generate revenue from user fees. How do you generate revenue from user fees for the park?
Do you want to start, or you want me to? You go ahead. Okay, start. Yeah, so there's, at the county level, there's some dog parks where they have like donation boxes that. Basically, there's a sign that states anyone that uses the dog park is strongly encouraged. Well, they ask you to put a, a, a donation or buy ten dollars or whatever you use it, right? It's not enforced, so, I mean, they might have someone come once in a while just to make sure that people are on a daily basis, it's not enforced. I, I received, you know, at least one email stating that, and, and my comment to that is, this is. You know, this is a, 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 a large vision planning document, right? I, I think the document that if you talk about dog parks, I'm going to be a little bit more interested about what we're doing is the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Which at your last board meeting, you approved the issuance of that R F P. That's going to talk more specific as far as our, our, our parks and open spaces. Like where that could potentially go. Also, in the community survey, there is going to be. Some locations for that. I can tell you from just the man, my perspective, this would be something that we would probably seek some type of donation or a grant to fund. You know, just with our, our capital funds, I don't know if we would necessarily have the funds to do that unless if you as a board want to make that commitment. But we're talking about ongoing maintenance and that, I think relying on user fees is, is unlikely. I think that would be something that the village would have to commit. And either A, have someone that would put a big enough donation to help with those ongoing maintenance costs. Or we would have to subsidize that through some type of, of property tax and that. So I just want to let you know when they read that, that's because, you know, it's an idea that is out there, there's a lot of exploration. That's involved with that, and, you know, I, I would say, you know, right now, there's, there's no traction on doing that. But, yeah, and if you, as we'll present the community survey in July. You'll see there's a lot of interest for a dog park, so that's where a staff, you know, will use the comprehensive plan and the corp, things about the recreation plan. This identifies some potential options, what it could look like. Then my comments.
I have an idea. Okay.
We definitely looked at, uh, eight, uh, and in particular that site, it's not cheap fence property. Like the Green Bay Road site, estimates from a couple of years ago were about sixteen, seventy thousand. To, to fence in kind of to a large dog and small dog zone, so. And then there's ongoing maintenance questions and so on, but it was definitely something we heard strongly in the plan from. Residents and, and various people that responded to us, so that's kind of why it was included in ultimately a recommendation. But again, kind of like our two thousand and nine plan, some of these things. You, you, you just take and you think about, and then you evaluate, and if you can't execute, or does it make sense to execute, you, you leave it all.
But can we even do the effort there, with the benefit of zone?
Yeah, you can.
And then what about market? You'd have to.
There is a parking, there is a parking pad that was part of the offices, the land. That we salvaged, or I should say we saved and did not demolish, and so it's still there. Because of the thought of, could it be an option?
Anything else, trustee Johnson? Trustee, well, what comes to you, trustee Johnson?
Uh, I'm good. Is that land, is that land that used to be the doctor's office? Okay, not taken down.
Yeah, the blood, when it, it's in a blood plane, it's deemed restricted. So that you can no longer develop it, you can't put improvements on it, when I say development, so you can't build structures. But you can, you can have anything that would flood, so you can have a parking lot, you can have fencing, you could have playgrounds of equipment. You know, sports fields, dude, sports fields, as long as it can get inundated but not damaged.
What we need to put up, like, backroom. But I just think it needs to be analyzed for.
No, I was just wondering, because it's, it's come up multiple times.
Yeah. Any other, any other questions?
No, I just have a comment, because this is one of the things that I support is a dog park. We've been involved with the dog park development in River West, called Rover West. This was an old ground field park site that we actually worked with the county to develop. They were really pushed by the residents putting that neighborhood. The only bad thing about it is with the weather, with the thals, it's muddy, it's nasty out here. So you almost have to wait till it dries out once again, so there's certain parts of year you just can't be out there.
You're going to get funding from this, the county, have fun with it.
Yeah, the county actually manages and work with the residents to kind of keep it clean.
So maybe if you move part of this discussion, maybe raise more of the business, whatever, what's happening. Nate, I don't know, there any other questions?
No, as I mentioned, I think this is a very good template, you know, for us to move forward, so I appreciate your comment.
And I echo that in, I guess in ten more years if we. You might be in the yard. And so we, we need a approval. Because we're going to do the public meeting, Jim.
Yeah, so tonight is just presentation.
Okay, so June.
It's twenty sixth, yeah.
And I'm assuming that we will do some pre notification so people know.
Through all of our communication.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is consider approval of twenty twenty three water main, we look at that at times here. Good evening.
Good evening. In fact, we deserve metal for the twenty twenty three water main, really, I think. Can be replaced in about twenty twenty three, and some tail and a different water main that we had. On North sixty third street, that's kind of between Brown Deer Road and Dean Road. It kind of does it backwards, sees, so it's sticky, that, that, that. This is one of the areas on our hot spot list, that's where we're some of our worst water main that we have in the village, so. It's, we're excited to replace that, we had a bunch of about four hundred thousand dollars for the project, our apple proven. Fund, and then Thursday, April twentieth. We opened up public bids, we received six bids from pre-qualified contractors, which is. About double that we've seen the past couple of years, mainly because. The size of our projects is not here, what we've been doing over the past few years. So included in your package is, is the bid cap. MJ construction was a little bitter in the project, they were at four hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Their bid is eighteen point seven percent higher than what our engineers estimate was in the project. And that's mainly because of the per foot cost of the water, and talking to those contractors. It really has come down to just escalating costs for the water main, mainly for the raw materials to. Manufacture the water main and then also to get it here as well. This, those costs continue to increase. We have to put on some escalators from what we originally funded it. In our STIP, um and we were pretty close on all the other items except for that one. That's the most volatile one of all the uh the items. The proposed project was in our capital improvement project as our capital improvement expenditures for the utility. The project that will be funded by a combination of a couple of utility capital accounts versus our loan that we took out in twenty twenty two. For water main replacement, uh along with a reserve construct for construction. Uh and then we'll also use some of the money from our standby and other distribution work fund as well. Um so our standby and other distribution fund will cover that cost of that overrun account of what we had funded. So on May ninth, uh we took the uh. Uh bid tags and the contractor award to the market commission and they did approve a warrant to contract the construction for the four hundred ninety eight thousand five hundred.
So as I look at these bids, so we went from almost five hundred thousand to almost eight hundred thousand. That's a huge.
Correct, definitely. So uh when I look at the bids, um MJ construction has been. Uh one of the contractors that has been doing a lot of work in the village so they know um what they're doing here. I think that's why you see them in Mid City, those that are few most top contractors that we have. The other ones, Heartland, it's been about eight to ten years since they've been here. Hello, I don't know why those uh were for our uh utility here in the village. It's been a long time. American sewers have a couple of small pockets here and there. And more of them uh has never done a project stability from here down the order. So um so that's why I kind of look back at the the low two were pretty close to each other. Uh those are our contractors in the most.
Uh two, two questions. Um you said from, it's from sixty second to sixty third. Was it the same? Fifty second to fifty eight?
Second, yeah, you're looking at the picture.
Yeah.
Like the back and see.
Right. I thought you said earlier was sixty step, that's what I was trying.
Oh, I apologize.
So sixty second to sixty third and the next three, okay.
The word on sixty thirty three and it goes from sixty second to sixty second. If this is.
As the end, so why is it tied by the year?
The highlight is also.
Okay, you don't know. The other question is, um are any of the bids from any minority contractors?
Not at all, no.
That's the question we have here at the board of course, but just wanted to ask, nobody bid. But you don't know what we are.
I don't know, no. Um from my understanding, from one of the owners of Mid City and MJ, and I know they're not minority.
Even when. When they were on.
Correct, uh they're they're a minority.
Um, Carson.
I do have a question for American Sewer Services and local, they they they've been off night, but uh. Is there facing usual customary or a? And I can see this, but I mean, probably other bids lower because they want to be, other companies lower because they. You know, kind of new ballpark being.
Yeah, that that's correct. It's that they knew uh when I look at the Americans bid, again, you know, they're quite a bit higher. Uh the cost per foot of water main. So there's a lot of different ways that you can put costs into your bid. Um and so I look at that per foot of water, that's the biggest item there and they're one of the highest.
So that cost is standard, so the MJ construction went and was able to get the product lower or they're just giving us concept.
Yeah, so there are a couple of things. Uh I think that they're they're lower because of how the suppliers that they're in them fight from. Um and then also the state equipment that they use might be paid on, so they're going to have to pass uh rolled up into their installation costs. But you know, what's the the life cycle of replacing another one? Water main, come on, that is. So um the water main that we're putting into power is a UDC water main and it's all lasting from seventy five to a hundred years.
Other questions? Trustee, um Reeve, do you have any question?
No, I don't.
Um. Trustee. Trustee Woods.
No.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes, I have a question. Reason why sixty third was selected because it had failed. Are there anything happening on sixty fourth or sixty second that will be coming for repair soon?
So, yes, so uh we look at uh the area of the village that had a lot of old cast iron water main in the fifties. Mainly in the sixties, that's the one that seemed to fail the most. Um and there is some of that on sixty four street, but the wooden wood, it's not as bad. It's on sixty third street. Had a number of uh water main breaks over the last ten years in sixty third street that really have contributed to uh this one being a horse. And as we go through in those areas and we're we're doing our water main care, we put a pad on there, we also put in an annual day. And we help slow the erosion on some of these cast iron and water mains. And we're seeing that that has helped the village because our brakes have gone off from that six, we started that project, that process. Um but eventually, of course, it will be done, because that's how the cast iron form of that.
Is it also due because of the weather changed, it thalls and freezes, it thalls and freezes?
Yeah, the biggest problem with the cast iron and water main is the corrosive soil that we have in round here. That really tends to corrode the outside of the way. And then because it was postural material, there's a lot of thought process that was. Um not the best material that was used. So we really is all over southeast Wisconsin that we see. The nineteen sixties style cast iron water main, every municipality has had a problem with it, just corrosion from the outside inward.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? So what we're pulling tonight is um. A group of twenty twenty three water main relay project. There were no entries to us, I mean, in terms of the the budget, we have covered through. Just however, through our other capital funds. So these are the most.
I have a motion, I'm looking more at the kind of the construction and the twenty twenty three water. Maybe they found MJ construction incorporated for the amount of one hundred and ninety eight thousand one hundred and forty hours.
It's a kind of second, it's been moved by Trustee Kaplan and second by Trustee Woods. To approve um the twenty twenty three water main relay project. I'll vote in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? I have a motion here, it's thank you, thank you, Jonathan. Oh, you know, one question, what did you say was going to be?
Uh Brian, um so our plan right now is to start it probably sometime in July after the fourth. And then be done in August, right? It'll go ready to uh Matthews doing the street reconstruction in that area as well. And one of the time residents, so any just work and things like that.
Yeah, next month will be the street repaving bids and this street will be included on that. And then ahead of that, we'll also have a ditching project that we're doing meeting. And then I'll hold a series of public information meetings for people that are affected on those streets. So we'll capture the law and paint that.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you. The next item on uh. On our agenda is uh consider approval of an amended development agreement for Cream City. Uh for patio collars. Nathan.
Sure, I can start, President Montgomery. Uh the advocate is Woods is here as well this evening. And in twenty fifteen, uh just a a year earlier, as part of our original building reconstruction project. Created a patio space for what was a prime time pub at the time. And there was a subsequent agreement that authorized the use of that outdoor space for patio. And in that agreement, authorized the use from seven AM to ten thirty PM, seven days a week. Uh those hours were kind of modeled on what at the time was known uh at Poco Loco. Uh which went to ten thirty and then uh past Asia, the River Lane Inn, which generally was shut down by by ten. Uh or eleven for meal service. And subsequently, we also enacted uh the Public House Fifty Five, the green space. Uh park coordinates that restricted that to ten PM as well. Uh but Cream City uh is the new operator of this space. And they are looking to extend those patio hours until midnight. And in order to do that, we have to revisit this existing development agreement. And you have the the original in your packet along with a proposed supplemental development agreement. A second supplemental development agreement, which would change the hours uh from seven AM. Uh until midnight. The agreement also does contain a essentially a one-year trial period uh before becoming continuous. However, if complaints or violations arise, uh the opportunity for the board to continue to review. That agreement and perhaps subsequently rescind the agreement is always still there. Uh today, we uh have only received one complaint from a nearby business owner of uh noise and some parking issues. Uh but there has not been uh a significant amount of time that the business has been open. So. With that, I could answer any questions or or the advocates as well.
How long have they been open?
I cannot say exactly. I would, I my guess is about six weeks now to that.
Uh since the eighth or the ninth.
Okay.
Sorry about that name. Um and then uh as I looked at. The information, the the letter that said, says that the previous owner went to um. Midnight.
He suggested that to Mr. Woods that this was, and this was the condition under which he operated. Uh I subsequently researched that. I did not think that was the case and found only this agreement that authorized till ten thirty. So whether there was something lost in translation or if he was just trying to uh grease the wheels to make the sale happen. I don't know.
Okay. Um I am currently the hours are, it's seven days a week, right?
As you kind of. For the business operation itself?
Yeah.
I can't say.
We're open Tuesday or Sunday currently, but when football season uh comes, we'll be open seven days.
And the hours currently for inside?
Currently inside, it's five PM until uh midnight Monday or uh Thursday. And then on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we're open until two.
Okay. Um. I don't know, any of the trustees have any questions?
Yeah, I think we had a long discussion related to this. Uh hours of operation, you know, we came to the collision just because of the noise and everything else. Think we landed at ten PM, was that?
That was ten, ten or ten, but that was.
That was for the park. Uh that was specifically to standardize our park hours to ten PM. And the fact that there was some residents immediately adjacent to uh the new park space, it means square park. So we we stuck with ten PM for that with the board. Uh in this case, you're talking about a location that really is a little bit different from that. Uh and in that it is not near uh other residences directly as communities for a park. That's kind of fronting right on the space, residence directly to the south. Here you have a few homes off to the east on River Lane, a couple tucked around onto the boarding third street. But you're primarily adjacent to other businesses at the at the Cream City location. And patio on the north side kind of faces out toward Brown Deer Road and the library.
I guess this is what they have here. Do you have any sound system or any music playing outdoors or is this people sitting out there eating?
We have two small speakers, uh while people are eating. However, it's not loud enough to project down the street. So we will keep it at a minimum, just so that. It wouldn't interfere with anyone. And then the businesses that are to the east and west of us are closed. Uh primarily. By maybe eight or by eight o'clock, there's no.
In person, how many people can you see that out there?
At one time, possibly forty, forty maybe, as I can think.
That's heated, but there could be people out there not seeing this out, you know, yeah.
Well, we wouldn't allow them to worry. If they're out there, they would need to be seen.
Okay, um other questions?
Yes, I kind of pay back. Trustee Johnson, we pay on the business that won't extend our hours. Or come for us. Uh what we've been trying to do is we can sit with the green. We can approve this, there's going to be no guarantee to the other business or they stay there. So I'm trying to ask, do you want to get system control? Another thing that is so, spring is happening now, so people will be sitting outside. So then, I mean, I don't know, maybe we need to look at, give us some time to see how the current hours work.
Before you expand it.
Yeah. And that's just a problem.
Any other questions? The chief is here. Any comments, any concerns that the officers have made?
No, just the one, you know, that we received from the business owner. Yard, you know, when there was more traffic or parking, parking in their lot was was being suggested. Uh on a weekend uh with some noise, but uh obviously that was, that was the only complaint that we've seen.
Okay. Uh Trustee Holmes, was that after we can verify you or do you know what time it is?
It was uh labeled as a weekend, Saturday and something. Or Friday and Saturday, two days.
Um may I speak to that? Um in the beginning, our patrons did not know where they could park. And that was during a watchout, but watchout was pretty busy. And so we needed extra parking space, but we have since uh communicated that they, you know, where their park and has been making. Uh complaints since then. Also, there has not been any music or anything outside as of yet. Uh we have not played it. It's also capped at a certain box so that it can't extend. And then last, our base is uh, we have an older uh base. Which means our patrons generally are either thirty five and up, with the average person being forty two. So it's a more mature crowd. Uh we don't have the younger people, you know, out bordering or fighting. Um very mature, very um both with the other. And there should not be.
Harry, you have something? I did. Uh two general comments that I wanted to make. One, we include some language. In the memo that if if the board did approve, um since this would be kind of any precedence, um just. Um kind of adding uh something in the motion about a contingent where we would do this after a certain time period. That allow the board and and staff an opportunity to just observe and make sure that things are being met. Um you know, certainly unhappy either whatever the board decides we'll put into motion for tonight. So as I make this comment, not trying to make a policy position or say it in one way or the other, but. One thing we will want to be mindful is the noise ordinance. And the noise ordinance in the weekends, I don't believe if I remember this, it does not work at midnight. I think it's eleven PM if I remember correctly. And so there is going to be an hour there that you, the noise ordinance is still in, uh will need to be enforced. But they are open patio hours. So um I just want to speak uh that that is something that we will be have to be mindful and that's putting them. If we're going to get calls for our officers, you know, that's putting them in that position of what to do between that. Eleven and midnight. eleven and midnight or even on weekdays, it's going to be even extended further. So uh you know, there's just something that we would need to work out if approved. And that's why I'm I'm mentioning that if you as a board do approve this, we would want that contingency just to be able to circle back and review that. And then that would just let the applicant know that, you know, that's that's a working relationship that we would work on to try to make sure that it's meeting the village's expectations. So.
And I think about the detail on this Tyler, that the way that the agreement is written, um there is a second point that says uh or excuse me, the third point in the supplemental that says uh the agreement in no way changes or restricts the enforcement of the village noise ordinance. And then it also talks about uh subjects reviewed by the village board after one year. Uh if there are no documented complaints, the use should become continuous. Uh if complaints or these violations occur in the future, this agreement uh enabling the extended hours is subject to revocation by the board in its sole discretion. So I think the contingency is built in there. Nathan, would you agree?
Uh yes, thank you. I agree. And I was just going to mention the same thing, which is there's a review process built in and it does not in any way aggregate the existing noise ordinance. So you know, if the people are out there, they'll still be within that um framework or or otherwise subject to uh to uh citation. But it's really a win-win for the village because uh in terms of the way it's written, because you still have that enforcement authority. If it doesn't go the way you expect.
Um, Howard, the chief.
Yes, that might, I mean, that might be one question if I made for the board for the applicant. You know, knowing that you're going to have the patio hours open ex past the noise ordinance. My question would be, how are you going to inform patrons who are at on down the patio about the noise ordinance to make sure that there's no um issues where we're having an officer that enforce and write citations?
I'm willing to cut the music off at eleven and then make an announcement that we must keep going at a minute.
And that would be like a daily announcement?
Chief Nathan?
I just want to clarify that the noise ordinance starts at ten P M and not a lot.
For the weekday or also the weekend?
Both.
Oh, it is both. Okay. I thought there was a difference between the two. It's so it's nine o'clock every day. Thank you, chief.
So. Okay, so okay, no question. So the current um patio operates now is at ten P M or ten thirty?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty. So the noise ordinance going to play at ten o'clock. You do have a standard.
This is a longer period of time.
Right, so it's good.
And I think historically, uh my general understanding of that was in why we see Poco Loco at ten thirty, why this at ten thirty was kind of the line down of the patio. And I think we talked about this a little bit with the the park space about if the the businesses are closing at ten, they might still be out there kind of cleaning up and winding things down at ten thirty. So I think that's why you see that a little bit of overlap.
Other, uh, trusty Johnson?
I guess, knowing that, would you be willing to adjust your hours of operation for for the patio?
Can you clarify what you mean by adjust?
Well, since no audience coming to play at ten o'clock, and you want to be able to be out there to twelve o'clock. So there's two hours difference. So if somebody gives out this phone call is made at another clock, then you probably you just issue a citation for noise ordinance within those. Are you willing to think slightly differently, closing down the patio at ten? And maybe allow people to sit out there or maybe ten thirty, eleven, but after that close patio altogether?
He said, just until ten thirty, why eleven?
Uh the uh well, the member responds and she wants to, you want to think about it? While he asked another question, do you want to?
Yeah, I I'm willing to go.
Um, I don't think this.
He said ten thirty.
Well, you have to go basically based on the ordinance is ten o'clock. But if you have anything as far as noise after that, then you could receive a citation.
Okay, can we um specify what what noise means? Like, what's your definition of noise?
Heather, uh she she.
Sure. Uh there's a, there's a couple of different ones. Uh one of them would be the for the music. Um and that is where is playing the audible at a distance of fifty feet by any person in the area of public space. And then there are the loudspeakers, which would also be the radio at ten P M. Seven A M during the week and then ten P M depending on the weekends. And then yelling, shouting and similar activities uh between ten P M and seven A M um that are unreasonably disruptive, quiet comfort or repose of reasonable person in ordinary senses. Those would be the three that would be possibly compatible.
So the music can't extend one hundred fifty feet from from.
Correct.
Okay, I'm not concerned about that. We had it. And in terms of yelling, shouting at anyone towards you, which I think I probably I would indeed just personally like uh have it stopped. Or ask them. But really, we're looking for, you know, people to be able to die, have a glass of wine. Uh maybe as well, and just sort of talk quiet music during. Nothing, but I can cut the music off at ten, I need to, but we would have them stop. That would extend as much as we need.
Trustee Booker, did you?
If I want to tell them all this is, uh we need to be consistent. My thought is this, if we apply some respect on them and we know there would be other venues they have out for the dying in ten thirty, that's not consistent. So we're talking about only ten o'clock. Uh because of the noise factor, we need to look at that with all the businesses they have.
And I think they all are ten, ten a period, ten and then based not to ten thirty.
I will say that uh the only other drinking establishment that I know that has an agreement uh for an outdoor space would is or was Parkview Pub. Uh they had space to the rear of their property. They similarly were authorized to ten thirty. But our other uh bars in Brown Deer generally do not have a patio space uh for for drinking, as far as I can think of. Trying to think of Rolies. I realize it's volleyball. Uh Rolies does not have an outdoor space.
What about Kathy Close? I'm new and I know they have outdoor spaces.
Yeah, and there there is extends to to ten thirty.
Other, other comments? Trustee Woods?
Well, I guess my question is, I can understand why I'll be saying, but I think a lot of it has to do with what surrounds. I mean, mentioning Kathy, for example, there really isn't anybody close that, you know, right above the cat, you know? I mean, the trade makes a lot more money than anybody on the patio. And if if I understand this correctly, they're playing the music now until ten thirty. And no outdoors.
Wasn't?
You're you're playing the music outside right now until the ten thirty.
We could, yes, but it's it's dependent on what. If the weather is nice, we'll play it. And there hasn't been any complaints. I think you'll get one thanks about traffic and and the accidents on Brown Deer Road before you'll get a complaint regarding the music uh bar.
I mean, it it just needs to mean that if the music is played a little bit of a cut off and it's just people sitting outside with what she said her age group was, you know, her age range was her uh patronizing, could the establishment? I'm not sure this would would cause any problems. I mean, the noise ordinance is still there and it's still enforceable if anything gets loud. But it sounds like that's not really a problem, just right now forcing people inside a little earlier. And I don't think I've heard of that.
Trustee Howard?
Yeah, I think we would, uh, but we would, um, because you're looking at the location and there is you know, there were houses, there's, you know, right next to that, I can see that. But in this case, um I understand that we have certain ordinance that apply to all the businesses, but I think this location, we need one of the other business, then but they have the, they're the only ones that have the outdoor patio, what?
No, probably not for patio. And so there's that speech. Correct, and public access.
They were once again, their hours are past, so ten, ten thirty, right?
Yeah, I I think I think we're, so I have a bar that is operating till two in the morning. Uh this is really kind of uh one of the few that we have. The brownier lanes might be sort of a hybrid version of ones.
Um you, you want to make a kind of appointment, kind of introduce yourself?
Well, I'm actually first uh one of the bartenders and also uh general manager of the place. Uh I just wanted to say like, our crowd, our bases, like professionals. We have a diverse crowd, white, black, all denominations. Um Dan, like she, she spoke earlier, we had our sound guy. Even if someone grabbed a remote beside myself or her and turned the volume up it's high enough to go, that volume is a cat. You can like, you can, if you're not like right there on that patio, you're not going to hear the speakers. And this on its own separate zone, or just from the outdoors, its own separate zone. So and then, like I said, we hear more traffic noise going down Brown Deer Road. And you know, than we would hear on the patio. And then also, I just want to throw in the fact that our season for patio is very limited. You're basically looking at this Brown Deer Wisconsin, we're looking at basically Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then you got to think about all the rainy days that you have in there. So I don't think it's going to be uh you know, a major problem as far as the type of crowd that we have and the type of crowd that we attract. We don't have people coming in there with their hand, uh hand sagging back twisted and all that. We don't, we don't have any of that. Uh we are getting more cash and we already do that vulnerability pretty much under surveillance. You know, three, four, seven. So and like I said, uh I believe the attorney or the the language is in there. So if it's not working and we're getting, you know, tickets for noise, then we're going to shut it down. Because we we can't afford, we can't operate business that way. Hey, we tried, we tried to give you that platform relax and enjoy the limited summer that we have here in Brown Deer. But if this becoming to be major issue, then we'll take the initiative and be proactive about that, shut it down ourselves. You guys will not.
Other question? But did you see, okay, Johnson?
Yeah, I'm just going back to Tracy. Um I haven't been here as yet, but my wife has been. And she said she had a good time. She said we need you to have a day night building. So. Bring that to a platform, we saw it well. Uh yeah, I'm open to supporting this business in the best way.
Um, trusty Breeze, I forgot about you been on.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's it's an experiment worth taking. We've got the ability to, you know, evaluate it later, but I mean, I agree. I think it's a unique um location and that the in it's facing Brown Deer Road. And I've been by there and I I'm not, I wasn't concerned about the noise. So uh, yeah.
So did everybody have a chance to speak? Uh it is something on our on the agenda, what, and from my perspective, I've been there a few times. Um what my concern is two. One is that um we need to be careful about consistency. I I don't know what other business may say it, but the other is I think they are still um to maybe do it on a trial basis. Do, you know, you said what, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, essentially the weather is going to dictate the patio. So and and so that you understand if you. Um and I don't know that we can craft it where we say uh I'm not a pro, but I'm making a suggestion that it would be done on a trial basis with those parameters. And not necessarily going to midnight. But maybe uh staying within the same hours because we don't know yet. That would be my suggestion, but I'm not making a motion. That's what I would like to see. And it is on our agenda. So if there is someone that is this discussion, I'll go consider it. So and maybe uh no. That's made it a good approval of the amended agreement. And in the amended agreement, they put you you didn't have any parameters in terms of the time, right? So to see what, but no, 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 I mean, uh.
Well, let me, let me take that. So if I recommend it, if for approval, the the conditions would be for up to a twelve month period. Uh you can feel free to give me the ability if you want, that, you know, if we start getting some some um concerns expressed that are consistent in nature, that we feel from a staff perspective aren't being addressed, that we would bring the development agreement back to the board for renewal. Uh if none of those concerns are arisen, I would recommend um you know, twelve months. So when we get to close about this time again next year before the next summer, we would review that again before we would still give an update as far as what we experienced. But that would kind of give a a one-year trial that period before we would make it, you know, a more permanent uh amendment.
And just for clarity, Nathan, that book in your memo, you said the adjacent patio is decent man and just from use without power limitation, but generally it's finished. Certain pages about ten through eleven. And they have an outdoor patio?
They do have an outdoor patio behind the fence. It was granted over thirty years ago. There was no consideration of hours in their conditional use permit when that was granted. I believe they do. I believe it's in a similar fashion with, uh you know, kind of background music, not uh not like uh, you know, meant to be the main attraction.
And this has nothing to do with the, you talking about the um this town, are there lights, light on the patio?
Uh not yet, but we're hoping to put some lights up there.
So you would have like candles or or not, just most of them.
I'd like to put the lights on the building that shine down toward the patio.
So is there someone that can make a motion?
What exactly are we now? I was going with the.
I would just say.
So the 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 language tonight, sorry, we don't have any like specific language. This could go in a lot of different directions tonight. So but it's it's either. So, but it's it's either approval or denial of the proposed amended language in the developer's agreement. And then if you add the language of approving or the dis- consideration of approving. I would recommend adding or uh, up to a twelve month. Period of time under the village manager's discretion. Uh, when to bring it back to the village board review under those twelve months, or within those twelve months.
No question.
Yeah, talking about, yeah.
Well, if that's this, we go anywhere between ten and two as well. Based on the hours of operation, actually, yeah. Do we want to fall soon to the neighbor to grant him the same?
That's right. The question to us is, Johnson, was.
Yeah, because I'm noticing the notice talks about between ten and eleven. Um, they stopped serving patrons, does it include the patio area?
I I am not certain, uh, that's just generally been my experience when I've died there, just on a personal level. Uh, this kind of when the business is closing up. So I would assume that's kind of when the patio was closing. But again, they don't have an agreement that says or stipulates they have to close down by a certain.
Questionnaires?
Yes, yes, but it didn't give me a conclusion.
And maybe, um, you said they had not had a, uh, conditional use permit. That they've been there thirty years.
They have, but it doesn't talk about the hours, it says you can have a patio. That's it.
Man, and neither did the the seller in mind. The people I I thought, they didn't have an agreement, they could just operate. Operating until midnight is what he did. But I get an agreement.
And I'll be agent of the place, we've been there after after midnight. We tore home.
So. And I don't know this. Either determining the buyer is gonna have to tell me or somebody. Where is our? Do all of these organizations have, uh, conditional use permit? Or permit for operations?
So, they, they, the patios evolve over time. And generally in Arizona code, uh, outdoor restaurant seating or outdoor patios are. Special uses, conditional uses, accessory uses. So you need to come forward and get some type of approval for those uses. You can have operators like Tor go rogue and just let people out on the patio, billy dilly. Uh, or you can follow the requirements and come before the board and ask for. What was the agreement for Tor, uh, to be amended, which is what they're doing. And there has been some inconsistencies over time as the patios have evolved. That some of them have hours of operation. Some of them have, you know, hours that are kind of tailored a little bit more to their specific business. Uh, and you now have a a different request, so. That is somewhat inherent to the conditional use process, because these uses themselves aren't always the same. You know, you can't always just go apples to apples. And so it gives the board flexibility, uh, to be able to kind of evaluate some of these conditions. We talked about, you know, proximity to residents, uh, you know, impact on neighbors, uh, and so on and so forth. So. I I think that this agreement, the way that it's currently worded, actually achieves the contingency that Tyler has suggested. Which is to say that. It is not continuous, it's subject to a review after one year. So regardless, we will need to update the village board within a one year time period, if not sooner. As to how this patio is functioning. And the police department, I'm sure, will be able to give us information and statistics at the hall service and so on. And at that point in time, it will be the board's right, early agreement, to rescind those hours and say, alright. We're 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 going back to ten thirty, because that's their current agreement, they can be out there till ten thirty.
Alright, I'll, I'll turn it around.
I think the parents of your question, uh, also.
Yeah.
A little too close to the mic there. And I think the answer, the short answer to that is no, there's a lot of congressional basis for the regulation, uh, for the property. Um, and that's why, as May mentioned, these are conditional uses. So you might look and say, we have one property that's up against, um. How to put it, area in the middle of nowhere, and there's not another property within, you know, three hundred yards. Okay, fine. You might have another property that's, uh, up against a residential area where the phones are tightly constructed together and, um. Um, you know, there's, uh, uh, traffic, the sound where. You know, sitting in the backyard, you're not hearing it, because there's another residential property fifty feet away. So, you know, I I think because they're conditional. Um, the terms and conditions to one location might be different than they are in others, I don't see any.
I'm gonna try to be, um.
No, I'm just curious what we're holding on, so.
We're not holding on anything yet, kind of most.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion here.
Yeah.
At this time, to have us agree to the development agreement about them to operate, all the work I did was to.
That's right. But that's not what the vice can call. The request is still in there. And that's, that is how they, that is how the supplemental agreement is drafted. Okay, I have another question to ask. You said that you were willing to turn music off at eleven. But still allow people to sit outside until midnight.
Yes.
But that's not in the developmental agreement about changing music on.
That could be stipulated if the board would like.
Yeah, I think if you look at the way that it's agendaized, it sets discussion, possible consideration. Or excuse me, consider approval of amended development agreement. Or creep city, that patio hours, that could be. Who am at nine eleven, eleven, um. Uh, the applicants indicate that, you know, they would be agreeable to, uh, eleven P M as opposed to midnight. Um, I I think you can, you you could turn like rented, uh, for a different, different hour.
So would you be amendable to eleven?
Yes, to turn it off at eleven and allow people to sit out there with a glass of wine.
I think the patio would be shut down if that, that's what I'm. That's. That's what I'm intending. The option is, instead of twelve, it would be eleven.
My, my option would is turn the music off at eleven.
Yeah, that's.
But that's not.
So was, was the motion formally withdrawn? So there's, there's no motion, no. So anyone can make a motion at this point?
So. You or you is the vote here. Um, I believe we accept the supplemental development agreement. Allowing patio use until midnight, but the music needs to be heard all the time.
Is there a factor? It's been moved by Trustee Woods to accept the, um. Amendment, you know, the agreement of Queen City patio hours, uh. To midnight music on at eleven, and it's been seconded by. But being. Johnson, so maybe I would second that, yeah. Uh, all of the favor. Motion here is, so you know I'm driving back patio.
Twelve o'clock.
I just want to make a general public statement, I mean, Lisa, we've already met, but I just want to publicly welcome you and Creek City Sports Bar. I know we've already talked about what you said, you know, the village can partner with you and work with you and. I mean, there's been great energy in the original village to help that to be, you know, a vibrant location. And one of our parts of Brown Deer. So, you know, once again, I just want to publicly welcome you again to the village and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
That was the power of it. Uh, the next item on our agenda is item number, um, D. Consider or discuss the possible consideration of on proposal, please. Speaking of mighty dispirits for tip number two, brandy roll and titanium.
So, we don't kick it off, yeah.
So this was something that was registered staff, I'll look at, um. So for the recap, we have six street lighting districts throughout the village. Um, there's, we have part of a subdivision, it's primarily residential. It does include some districts along Brown Deer and Sixtieth Street. Uh, we have Arvon Drive, which is right outside of Polish Hall here. We have our own corporate mother. Uh, we have Focus North, uh, Tilbury Court. In the original, so over our lighting districts, they are all assessed via adjacent property owners. So everybody with clear tax bill gets a special assessment for the cost of the street lighting. So that's the energy cost and any repairs that are made for the districts. Over time, these have come down recently, because we have finished a conversion with all six districts to L E Ds. So the energy cost and then also repairs have come down significantly. Um, I use part plaza neighborhood as a usually good example, as primary residential. They're paying around seventy dollars a year for the cost of that, um, street lighting. We have one, uh, a seventh district now in the village that comes out of the general fund. For ten thousand dollars a year that. All Brown Deer taxpayers are paying for. Um, so the idea has been to investigate, we can, treating this seventh district, just like, you know, their six. And assess that cost back to the, um, adjacent property owners. There's about fifty properties on there, it's a pretty good mix of, um, commercial and residential. And so I went through an exercise and set up this seven mirrored to the other six. And so how the other six to operate is, um, if we can kind of go to the next page here. Here, and there's a, there's a series of tables that we always see this at the end of the year, when we're going through the street lighting costs, and this is how they're determined. Um, we allocate about a thousand dollars, each one is slightly with the various reasons. But we try to build an escrow account with these, so we set aside some money. Um, and then you just take the we energy bills. And that gets put in and then also, um, any knockdowns or repairs. So right now, we have an arrangement or a contract of the lighting. So if there's a hole that gets hit by a car or knocked down, and that's a common replacement, a faulty ball or a faulty wire. Um, we're probably make that repair and the actual boss gets included and then assessed divided on amongst all the other properties. Um, you take the property acreage and that will determine to something about very large property. Uh, let's use maybe like the bowling alley or Slask funeral home, they're gonna pay more percentage than just a single family residential. At bigger lot. Um, so I went through each, all fifty, um, made some. Um, estimated guesses, I did just pull all of the, uh. Latest we energies bills from the last year and put that in. Um, and then put in, um, an estimate for knockdowns and repairs. Brown Deer Road, we sometimes can get some more larger repair costs, you see the more heavily traveled roadway. The lights are a lot larger, they're twenty eight foot, so when those get damaged, they cost a lot more to replace. Um, so I did come up with some estimates, some businesses are gonna be paying around three hundred dollars. And average, and a home could be about a hundred.
And annual?
Annual, and that's very much in line when that compared to the other businesses. Um, in the other lighting districts or the other homes that were also paying, so. It checked out, um, I think that'll be a pretty good estimation. This is just step one, we're just presenting this for information only, um, the other next steps would be. Tyler, I have a draft a letter and you would, um. Send that out to all of these properties and let them know at the board's conference. And then we have to hold a public hearing and get feedback, right? And I think we were looking at July seventeen meeting.
And this, how long has, has those been coming? Since two thousand?
Or, yeah, right around two thousand was the first, uh. Decorative streetlights on Brown Deer Road.
So twenty three is correct.
And there was a full replacements of that street lighting system.
In two thousand fifteen, we replaced, there was, you remember, there was old green bulbs. On Brown Deer Road, and they were not L E D, they were the high pressure sodium lights, so. Also, the energy bills that were a lot more expensive historically, there was probably most of the past one, like fifty men were paying. Um, annually on it, it has come down to fifteen, the pan nation, what we moved the budget.
Will you have that at eleven? In terms of historical data, letting people know how we've saved, but also that. That we've saved, but also that those are the covering his cost for twenty three years.
Yeah, just the, the, first of all, Matthew thinks, I know that was a lot of preparation or get for tonight, so I just want to thank you for that. Um, I'm sorry. Yeah, the two points I want to make on this, and the, we could have very well just called this out. But the reason why I wanted a stop point with the board before we roll out communication is. Anything that you put as a special assessment, no matter what that charge is. Um, can really trigger an emotional reaction on any property owner. So we wanted a checkpoint with the board to make sure you want to pursue this before we do that. And as Matthew mentioned, we're talking about ten thousand dollars, so it's, it's a policy decision for the board. Remind me how many properties, probably you're impacting that available.
Fifty.
Okay, fifty, so it's a question of, you know, with fifty properties paying for about ten thousand dollars. So that we can have an equitable assessment of all the lighting districts. Is that something that you as a board want to take on? And so that's the discussion tonight, we don't even need a vote tonight. Um, I, we just have it as a discussion, but if we can just have a general discussion, make sure. You know, if that's true support of the board, we'll be happy then in the next probably one to two weeks, send it out. Now, as I mentioned, I've been visiting with business owners, this is another reason why I want to, when we have a discussion like this. I have some initial contact with them, trust a relationship with them. And I kind of put this potentially potential with one or two of them. And it's gone okay, and and I think they value, uh, the streetlights and understand from a public safety perspective, the importance. But nobody loves a special assessment, so it's not something that they're well, you know, I don't even think it'll work with open arms. But I think there's an understanding, uh, the reasoning behind it. But that took a face to face interaction to explain. I I would, I would guess a a letter one that will demonstrate some of the similar points, it will not be perceived the same as a one on one interaction. So I would stand with love just a a a general, um, feelings from each of you. Before we proceed and send out the letter, um, just looking for quick reaction.
I I I support it, I think that they. That. The special assessment, while it may be new, but for the last twenty three years, they, you know, not having to do that. And times have changed and we have to relook at reallocating. Um. Realocating the debt recorded a lot of that. Anyone else?
Well, I think we want to make sure that we don't go back to the other cities that are here and say. Well, you're paying, we've got pretty much. I mean, it just seems to me every other street lighting in Brown Deer is paid for by the people who live there. So I think we should unfortunately, since that, and you know, it's gonna have to happen now that all of these businesses get included in having streetlights paid for by because it's for them.
Anyone else?
Yes, I will be in support. Alright, uh I think this is the way we communicate to them. Just to share, this has been a shared responsibility of everybody except them. I mean, they pay a little bit, but now put the burden not solely on them though, but this is something and proof that was done mainly for that quarter and they've been paying very dearly to support it.
Trusty ones.
Yes, I would agree with yeah to three to our speed and then and then um you know, to include some history of why we're doing what we're doing to, I think that would go along the way. President's wish.
Okay.
Uh yeah, I support it also. This is cleaning up our business. And I think that's, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, I support it. I guess uh my only concern is um on the north side of Bradley Road, there's a lot of residential housing. So it's, I mean, in other ways, it's it's really similar to the business park, you know, those other areas. On the south side of Brown Deer Road, it's all businesses and um and there's a few businesses on the north side, just, you know, that's my concern as a homeowner, I, you know, I would think of the lighting would be covered. Um but I I still, you know, generally support it. I think it's a good idea.
You would send out a draft letter that will just.
Yeah, that's what I'm just gonna recommend, is send out a draft letter. And we have, I know we initially talked about this on July seventeen. The more I think about it, we may even want to do it June twenty six. Just know there's, I want, if we could talk offline, yeah, because I'm starting to think now what's gonna be on July seventeen. There's gonna be quite a few items in the job, because we're also uh gonna have the initial presentation of capital improvement plan that night too, so I think there's gonna be a hot end with the community survey results, marketing. So we may want to move this up to June twenty six, so as I'm just thinking through that, it just don't, we changed that date, that's why. But yeah, what I'll do is by the end of the week, Matthew and I will work on a draft letter to send out to all of you, to give you a week just to be able to see it before that goes out. And then if you have any modifications you want us to make to that letter, please let us know.
Looking at the map, how many parcels are all by the village? And you know, when it comes to the village, there's two.
Oh, well, yeah, I'm very, yes, correct.
There's, I think there's two that the village. There's a column, a block colony, I had an address on there too, they own the property as well.
So these institutions would be also paying for their furniture, or would they be passed on to the property?
We would have to bill, we would bill our social.
Yeah, so I think we have incentives that the board is in favor of looking for.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, um just to clarify, I'm looking at two different agendas. The agenda we have tonight has an E, review of possible action. The food change in the metal side condominiums. But on the online, we'll be headed under the.
Yeah, we sent out a.
I printed the wrong one.
Oh, okay.
The one that was emailed is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that was a part of the, yeah, so Michael told it, that was part of the consent agenda that was approved tonight.
Okay, because I didn't, I didn't list it because I was looking on here. And anyway, I was looking on here.
Okay, so do you mind if I add to the point of clarity to Nathan? So what's the question? So I think when President Mike Government was reading the list, as far as what to be approved on the consent agenda, she read A and B and not C. Right? So the fact that C wasn't read. When we we discussed that item, here more, it would be approved.
Yeah, here would be my suggestion is um this way up here in the minutes uh is there unanimous consent to also consider uh agenda eleven six C, six C, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Um as also approved um to reflect in the minutes and if there's unanimous consent, I can solve. Um and then uh it'll it'll show up in its app. Because because we did, everybody, um others may have thought that they were voting on that or not thought they were voting on it. But if we ask that there's unanimous consent, we just have the
man.
We have have the the minutes reflect that specifically with the agenda of six C, which is review of possible actions to improve change. And that metal side con- the declaration. Uh and then there's unanimous consent, I'll just be so. And if anybody says, no, 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 I didn't know what I was voting on and didn't realize what's going on there, that's totally fine. We can pull it off and have separate discussion.
Right, yeah. So um it is in our package. Um so is there unanimous consent for um the approval change in metal side one? Condominium declaration.
And if I could be heard before you consider that, could I just make a few comments? The county register of deeds has asked that the ink on the amended declaration plat be used, that that it be changed to comply with the statutory requirement. They've also asked that amended be added to the plat. Whereas presently, it just says metal side one condominiums. The final, the point is, the final plat will have amended added to it. And it will have different ink, which probably won't affect what you've seen.
Did you say ink?
I N K. They want the ink to last forever.
We used the wrong ink.
Somebody used the wrong ink.
Well, that's in.
That's not.
Right. Alright, so um do we have unanimous consent to um approve item number six C from our online initiative? Give them all.
I hope that we use unanimous consent for item six C, possible new action, approval change for the metal side. One condominium declaration for forty five, forty eight, forty five, fifty west, can you load?
So for clarity, do I need a second option or just a better?
If what unanimous consent is, is if anybody objects.
Right.
Raise your hand now and hold your piece. And uh since there was no objection, then it's just passed.
Right. Alright. Um the next item on uh is item number eight. I'm moving here and it is eight. Oh no, that's eighty eight. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Thanks, Tyler.